Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, January the seventeenth, and this is the regular board meeting of the Forest Hills School Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mrs. Cropper, roll call, please.
Mr. Bibb?
Here.
Dr. Simmons?
Here.
Mrs. Stewart?
Here.
Dr. Strickler?
Here.
Mrs. Jonas?
Here. Item one point three, the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one point four, Safety Briefing. We have an exit at the top of the steps and at the bottom. Two point one, Motion to Adopt the Agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Dr. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes. Three point oh minutes. Can I get a motion to approve items three point one through three point three as presented?
I will make a motion to approve items three point one to three point three as presented.
I'll second.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Dr. Strickler?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes. Item four point oh, Special Recognitions. Mr. Hook?
In Ohio, let me put that down. In Ohio, January is School Board Recognition Month. School Board members exemplify local control and decision-making in education. And too often, I think, we forget about the personal sacrifices that school board members routinely make. They volunteer hundreds of hours and an immeasurable amount of energy to ensure that our schools are providing the best education possible for the children of Anderson Township and the village of Newtown. These men and women are elected to provide the framework for our public schools. They represent you, the taxpayer. And they take this responsibility seriously by attending lengthy and sometimes challenging meetings. Our school board is one of more than seven hundred such boards across the great state of Ohio. And these boards enable us to have local control over our public schools, control that is in the hands of people that we know, your neighbors, your friends. In the tradition of representative democracy, school board members are our connection to influencing how our public schools are governed. And with the advice and counsel of educational professionals, the school board has an impact on virtually every aspect of the Forest Hills School District. The school board is also responsible for assuring that public, or assuring the public, that the money allocated to public schools is providing a good return on the investment. So to Mrs. Jonas, Mr. Bibb, Dr. Simmons, Mrs. Stewart, and Dr. Strickler, I wish to thank each of you for your dedication and civic responsibility and your willingness to serve your community. I provide each one of you a certificate courtesy of Ohio School Boards Association. And to all that are listening, I want you, I'd really hope that you would take a special effort to send an email, a letter, a card, or just say thanks the next time you run into one of them in the store or somewhere in the neighborhood. Please join me in a round of applause for our men and women of the Forest Hills School Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Item five point oh, Reports to the Board. Five point one, Mr. Preston.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for your time, as always. I have three brief messages for you tonight. First, I'd like to welcome Wendy and Jason as Board of Education members to the Forest Hills School District. The Forest Hills Teachers Association looks forward to working with you in the months and the years ahead. Second, I'd also like to wish each of you on the board success in the individual roles you will fill. From the Finance Committee to the Policy Committee and everywhere in between, you each are vital to the functioning of our school system. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the ongoing work between FHTA building leaders and our building principals. This work drives our monthly district advisory committee meetings that create positive outcomes for students and staff. The professionalism of our staff is a reminder of the strength of our school district. The Forest Hills Teachers Association looks forward to continued collaboration with the Board of Education and the Forest Hills School District this semester. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Mrs. Gilliard?
Okay, my New Year's resolution is I'm gonna sit like in the second row versus the seventh. But good evening, Stacy Gillard with the Forest Hills Foundation. First, I also want to echo Mr. Preston's comments around congratulations, welcome to a new year to all of you. I also wanted to specifically thank Katie for serving on the foundation board this past year, and welcome to Wendy for serving as the board liaison with the foundation. So I have a few updates. First and foremost, I just want to continue to thank our donors for allowing these opportunities to come about, and we have some grant opportunities that are available now. So two years ago, the foundation created PTO and PTA community grants. We saw a need to hear from our key stakeholders, our students and our parents. So just a little recap, we currently have three options for grants. We work with the district to have specific district grants, teacher grants every year, and then the third bucket is the PTA/PTO community grants. So those are available now. The QR code is on the slide, and information will be included in all the principal emails coming up, as well as through your PTAs and PTOs. The applications are due February ninth, Friday, February ninth, and any parent and/or student can apply for a grant. Since 2022, the spring of 22, we have given over forty thousand dollars in these grants, and so we are really looking forward to hearing from more students. We think that's really important. For those that remembered last year, we specifically had the Nagel students request a grant for the recess equipment, and so we want to hear from students and parents. So just a reminder that these are available. You can complete them online. If you have any questions, you can let me know. And then the second thing, just wanted to promote that the foundation has thrilled to, we've been thrilled to support Parent Academy this year. Again, as we talk about our key stakeholders, clearly, as parents, you are one of them. And so next week, Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, at six thirty PM, will be the third Parent Academy. You can register today, and babysitting and food will be available. So we hope to see lots of parents. I did want to give a quick couple shouts out. Like myself, I'm a parent. It's, what does it mean to take time out of your Wednesday evening to go? But I will just state that there's a couple sessions particularly that I thought are really great to point out, one being Growing Up in the Public. Dr. Deborah Heitner, Carrie Brown is going to be talking through parenting, through transitions and big emotions, through Beach Acres, college credit plus information, mental wellness resources, and many other topics that evening. So look forward to seeing you at Parent Academy next Wednesday. The last two things, which I didn't put on my slide, is Science Fair is coming up at the end of the month, January twenty-seventh. The foundation is thrilled to be able to also sponsor that event throughout the district. And lastly, if everybody can save the date, the Forest Hills 5K this year will be Saturday, May eleventh. So any questions?
I have a question. If it's not for this month, it can absolutely be next, but I was thinking, as you were talking about the student grants, that it would be great to have an update on how Nagel is using the equipment, or just how that's worked for them. I would love to hear that positive.
Absolutely. So we, with all of our grants, we request that there be a assessment of where the grants, the money has been used, the impact, student impact it has had. So each year, we request that of all of our grants. So at the end of this year, we will have that information, not only from Nagel, but all of our teacher grants. So there were over forty-plus teacher grants awarded, our district grants, as well as our PTA/PTO. So that's a great, and I always love to say, how can the students talk about the impact? So, great question. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six point one, Superintendent Updates. Mr. Hook?
Thank you, Ms. Tate Jonas, and members of the board. Last meeting, I mentioned to you about wanting to adjust the calendar, which will be in a vote later. We put it in the Human Resources area. That's where we usually vote on calendars. But again, what we're doing is currently, March fourteenth was the end of the quarter, which is a Thursday, and Friday was gonna be a Professional Day, Professional Development Day with school off. We also had the presidential primary that following Tuesday. And because we have, we use the schools' voting locations, and based off of just seeing that, it was a little chaotic. So I would like to recommend, when we get to that point in the consent agenda, that we adjust the calendar and actually swap Friday's off day and Professional Development Day to Monday, and then take Tuesday off. However, it's not off-off. It'll be Professional Day for our teachers. We've been very fortunate to get ahold of Dr. Bill Daggett. He's recognized for his ability to move pre-K twelve education systems toward more rigorous and relevant skills and knowledge for all students. He's crisscrossed this nation for the past thirty years and is really such an advocate for public schools, but yet he challenges us to be more focused on our children's future and on maintaining, instead of maintaining the schools of our youth, to really look forward to what, what does the twenty-first century really hold for us? What is AI going to do for us? Not to put up roadblocks, but how do we use it within our public schools? How do we get kids ready for that reality? And so we're very excited. We got, got ahold of him through a grant, through the Hamilton County Public Health, and so we're excited. He'll be with our staff on Tuesday. And then that Monday night, where he's gonna speak in a community forum as well. So we'll publicize that, and by tomorrow, it'll be on the website, and we'll push a lot of that information out. So that way, it's, the schedule's just not choppy. We'll go to school as normal on Friday and then take Monday, Tuesday as Professional Days. Okay? The other thing I just, that's a little unusual, is when you get to section fourteen-one in your, in your packet or in the agenda, that'll be on the second reading for their NARCAN policy for our school district. The first reading took place in December. We typically bring the majority of our policies in twice a year in the fall and in the spring, but this one was a newer one, so it needed a little bit more eyes on it. So we had our attorneys make sure that it was, it was good to go, and so it'll be coming for a second reading and a vote tonight. So those are the two biggest things. Plus, again, thank you again for your willingness to serve on the Forest Hills School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Item seven point oh, Public Commentary. The board is committed to conducting its meetings in a productive and efficient manner to assure that the meeting is complete in a reasonable time, while also organizing the importance of a fair and adequate opportunity for public input. In order to conduct an orderly and fair representation of expression, the board will provide a period of public participation per policy PO zero one six nine point one at every regular board meeting. Public participation will be a total of thirty minutes. Each speaker will have three minute, a three-minute time limit. If more than ten speakers, individual time will be adjusted. There, we do not allow yielding of time. The board does not discriminate based on individual content of speech or viewpoint of the speaker. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted at the president's discretion. Speakers are asked to speak- Speakers are asked to speak from the podium and address the board. Speakers are asked to state their name clearly, or to start by clearly stating their name and address. The district expects attendees to treat others with respect and courtesy, even when expressing concerns or criticism about any issues or incidents. And our first speaker will be Mrs. Roush, and up on deck will be Mr. Nye.
Good evening. Thank you. As you probably know, we have a lot of organizations around Hamilton County and Southwest Ohio that work for small and big gains around social emotional needs of the whole community, birth to 99. One of those is called Showing Up for Racial Justice, or SURGE. It's a national organization with over 200 chapters representing several hundred thousand Showing Up for Racial Justice as a national organization supports self-determinism, reflection, and learning from mistakes. I am a member of the Showing Up for Racial Justice Cincinnati chapter, and have to read for you a statement that's been approved by consensus of all members of Social Showing Up for Racial Justice Cincinnati. SURGE Cincinnati has previously voiced support for growth in the Anderson Township and Newtown Village communities towards more inclusive, more equitable positions and policies around mascot change, diversity education, and rescinding the so-called kindness resolution. We applaud the commitment and active follow-through that enabled this favorable outcome to be achieved. We take solace in the slow but steadying hand of the judicial process, which brought about a correction, and allowed the community to redefine fairness and equity in the Forest Hills School District's neighborhood schools and surrounding areas. We, SURGE Cincinnati, believe that the rescinding of the unjust resolution is a meaningful step towards welcoming all students and bringing the Anderson Newtown communities closer to the educational ideal wherein all students, every single one, all students are valued for their diverse abilities, experiences, backgrounds, and perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nye, and next on deck is Mr. Mishak.
Hi, Jeff Nye, 1000 Eversole. In the past, a couple of times, I've talked to the board about communication, and it's something I'd like to bring up here again. I've criticized the board in the past for not being good communicators with the public. And it occurred to me recently that because I'm a lawyer, and I've sat on some boards, and have boards who are clients, and represent clients in front of boards, maybe I've been to more board meetings than most people. Not long ago, I was at a different school board meeting, and one of the things that really struck me is how frequently and in what depth the board members talk to each other, they talk to the administration, the administration talk to the board, and they all talk to the public. I would like to see, in the coming year and years, this board do a better job of communicating your strategic priorities to us, of engaging with the administration when they give reports and give updates and so on, asking questions, and making sure that you and everyone understands what they're talking about. I think there are, an important part of communication is listening. I've said before that I'd like to see board members conduct listening sessions. The public here has up to 30 minutes to talk to the board. Sometimes that's plenty, sometimes that's not enough. I think it's not a crazy idea for once a month, one board member to say, Monday night at 6 o'clock, I'll be here, come talk to me. Rotate a different board member every month, and then at the next meeting, you update everyone on what you heard, what you learned, what ideas people brought to you, that kind of thing. Some days, nobody's gonna show up. Some days, you're gonna have 100 people who are very mad about something. But getting out there and communicating outside of this setting, I think, is very valuable. And another thing that struck me at this particular board meeting was how sincerely the board engaged with the public. This particular meeting had a lot of people and a lot of students who addressed the board on some particular issue. And in the board discussion session, they referred back to those comments and said, I agree with you on this, I don't agree with you on that, here's why we did this, this is what we're thinking on that, in significant depth. That's the way a public board should operate, and the administration should do the same thing. When something comes up and there's a question or a comment for the treasurer, the superintendent, or whoever it is, I'd like to see more direct feedback to the members in the audience. And so in that vein, I'd like to lob a softball to Larry on this one, and hope he can address this, because I know my kids are gonna ask. What does it take to cancel school for wind chill? Because I know it's gonna be cold. I'm gonna get asked.
300 below zero. No, I'm kidding.
If you have an answer to that, I'd love to hear it. That's all. Thank you.
Well.
I think the answer's snow.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, I get it, I get it. I'm sure there were a bunch of spoons under the pillows and ice cubes in the toilets and a variety of things like that.
Pyjamas inside out.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them. Cold is a little bit more difficult than snow and ice and those kind of things. So really, on those days, our morning usually starts around 4, 4:15, and so there's no real hard rule of thumb, but when you start getting down to minus 10, it starts, you know, and again, it depends on the district a little bit, and what, what's going on within the district, the type of topography. Wasn't quite as cold as predicted at the 11 o'clock hour as it was in actuality, so that's why I usually, I know people would like to have it Friday or the day before, and no, it's just never cooperates, seems to cooperate. And the one time I did do it last year.
Nothing happened?
This horrible snowstorm coming, I ended up with a rain day. So, you can't win sometimes. But it's not a one-man effort, for sure. We start driving roads that early. We have several people that drive the roads. We start communicating with our friends at ODOT, as well as township and the state. So we have several people doing those things all at once. We have kind of a deadline that we shoot for, otherwise then we start running into problems with transportation. So I usually communicate with adjacent school districts, or at least their superintendent, to see where they are at. So that's kind of the game planned. Things can change, you know? Depends on when a snow hits. There's so many variables to it. I wish it was an exact science, but as far as just cold, I try to watch how much wind there is. But like I said, when it starts getting close to 10 below, that's, I start getting, my ears perk up, and the hair, the hair on my nose starts freezing, that's when I, no, I'm, but yes, that's kind of the, that's a rule of thumb, but it's not an exact. I mean, if the weather starts changing on us real quick, too, you know, does, is a two-hour delay enough to get us where we need to be temperature-wise or road condition-wise? That's the next thing. Is it a delay or is it a cancellation? You know? I think when you look at the surrounding districts, other than Cincinnati Public, and that's a whole different animal, you know, in terms of transportation and what, what kids are going through to get to bus stops, I understand why they, they chose to close. But we, I don't know, we just seem to be in a little bit of a pocket here, temperature-wise. The colder temperatures were north, and to the, and well, as soon as you got outside of the belt, the loop, it, temperatures started dropping, you know, especially when you started pushing east and west and north. So like I said, it's not an exact science, but I take it seriously, and I'll sleep good tonight, hopefully, but it starts pretty early.
Fingers crossed for Friday.
So for point of reference, my parents moved to St. Louis from Toronto when I was four, and my mother had never heard of a snow day. So they had a massive snowstorm in St. Louis, and she bundled me off and sent me off to school alone, and I walked into a dark building at age five, because nobody else was there. So, all depends on where you're at.
Well, it's the type of equipment that's available to you, too. You know, if you have a snowstorm in Atlanta, there's only one truck with a blade on it in the whole city. I've been through that. You know, up here, they, you know, it's a little better, so yeah, it's, I'm sure they didn't close.
Kevin Mishak, 8433, Holiday Hills Drive, Cincinnati, Atlanta, 45255. And I grew up in Atlanta, and we don't have snow days. We have ice storms. And when you have snow and ice, you shut down the city, and you don't worry about it. So, up, just, there's just nothing, nobody worries about, life goes on. Today's topic, I want to thank the school district for updating the five-year forecast, the document that I review on a regular basis. I will note that it has not, or should it have been updated for the current negotiations ongoing for the employee three-year contract that is being worked on by the district, and I do appreciate that. Past, over the last year or so, I've learned that there are additional numbers, figures, finances that are not involved in this five-year forecast. I'd like to know why that's not here. I'm aware of the 2024 operating budget as disclosed in previous board meetings is a lot closer to $115 million, not $98 million. I understand there are some different things in that. When looking at the footnotes and trying to sort through this, some of the early revenues are very clearly outlined, all right? But when you get down to 1.06, other sources of operating revenues, those are a little, in my opinion, vague and poorly designed for a $17 million number. I would like to see a little bit more detail in that. Going forward, I do understand that John will be working on a schedule, so it will be, as a community, able to understand how we can expect our buildings and our facilities and our, and our resources to be spent in a timely manner and under a plan, and I look forward to that with eager anticipation. I would hope that information would be included in what I consider the primary planning document of this district. It's a little hard to dig through for anybody, the board docs and find some of these discussions and things like that. I've also talked to some others in the communities, CPAs, accounts, and things like that. They would be appreciative of more notes and footnotes within the five-year reports, a little bit more explanation of what's going on, and what we can expect in terms of conditions and things like that. Although we all worry about wind chill factors when our children stand outside, I'm on that list. I do understand there can be some vagaries and vagueness in that issue, whether it's finances or closing school. Appreciate all your hard work, folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 8.0 Human Resources. Mr. Fellows?
Well, good evening to the board, and it's great to see you all again. Seems like we were just here. Pretty straightforward HR portion this evening, the first of which is an MOU with, between the district and FHTA that the board has been kept aware of. We started talking about this back in the fall, and it is really just as a follow-up to clarity around Article 46 and the early retirement incentive, and the manner in which funds are distributed into the board's qualified 403B plan. So that cleans that up for FHTA members, and that item 8.1 is before we start our consent agenda. So at this time, it's recommended that the board approve the MOU as presented. Any questions?
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the Forest Hills School District and the Forest Hills Teachers Association as presented.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Dr. Strickler?
I'm going to abstain, although not directly relevant. I don't want to give any appearance of conflict of interest.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 8.2, this is the beginning of our consent agenda. This begins with the HR report, and a couple retirements and resignations for the board's approval this evening. First of which, Sheriff Von Davidson from Anderson High School, 30 years of service, and certainly wish her the best at the conclusion of this school year. And a couple classified employees as well, Kanita and Brian listed there. Kanita has been a para in the district. She's been 20 years, just over 20 years in the district as a para, currently at Mercer and Bryan Stewart, 34 years of service as a custodian. I cannot believe that Bryan Stewart is retiring. His brother Dwayne was at Anderson and just retired as well, and we certainly wish him the best and thank him, really all of them, for their, their service to our students and our community, wish them the best in their, in their future moving forward. You'll see, item B, a couple kind of late resignations there for approval this evening, and the rest of this report is pretty straightforward. A handful of changes of assignment, and some folks coming off of their probationary status contracts onto the one-year limited contract in the classified staff area. Couple new student teachers coming into us this spring, so we're excited to have them in, putting them right to work with our teachers, helping out and working with students, and we're excited to have them. And then, as always, a list of volunteers and supplemental approvals for this evening. Any questions on the board report, the HR report as presented?
Rob, I had a couple, that's all right. And a lot of these are just me getting my feet under me, trying to understand a little bit more. On, what was it, Section F, it talks about, recommended the following personnel be appointed on a probationary basis per article. What is the, can you explain a little bit about why people are hired on a probationary basis?
Yeah, it's per the contract within OPSI 177 and 273, and it's aligned with statute, which allows for hiring employees on a probationary period. It's a, it's a temporary 60-day period in which, you know, they can be let go without cause during that time. And beyond that, after that, first, they roll on to a one-year limited contract, and then at the conclusion of that contract year, at the end of June, they would then be eligible to move to a two-year limited contract.
Great. And then one more on Section H, I think these are the supplemental hires for coaches. So these, they're being hired now for these specific roles for the rest of the year, and then that contract ends at the end of this academic year.
Yeah, supplemental contracts are one-year contracts, and most of them that you see listed are typically one-season contract.
Yep.
And so a lot of these are spring season employees, and that although, in theory, it's a year contract, the season in which you're actually working is one, and then the pay would be associated with whether it is multiple seasons or just the one.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on to 8.3. 8.3 is listed as a follow-up to Mr. Hook's report earlier during his superintendent update with respect to the upcoming presidential primary and the calendar adjustments as stated prior. And if there aren't any other questions, as those two items begin our consent agenda, I want to turn it over to Mr. Eckert.
Good evening, members of the board. I actually have a very short agenda today. We have a contract for the WIS engineering agreement. It's the maintenance system for our boiler systems in a variety of schools. And at this point, I would recommend that the board accept, rec, why can I not talk all of a sudden? Take two. I recommend that the board accept the contract as presented. Any questions?
Again, another one that's just more about understanding process. Can you explain a little bit about the process for identifying and choosing service providers like this, when we have maintenance needs or any type of needs and we're contracting out for something like this? What's the process for identifying those providers?
A lot of that. Mr. Corley will interview various vendors. This is vendors we are very familiar with. We've actually switched to this vendor for stronger service, stronger delivery capabilities, and everything of that. So Mr. Corley and myself will So Mr. Corley and myself will vet various vendors that we go with. A lot of the vendors we have for the regular routine items, we do a vast majority of all our maintenance in-house. But this is a specific certification that none of our people have and it's not cost-effective to get. So, you know, we do that. Mr. Corley was not pleased with the previous vendor, so we've moved with WISE. So we evaluate every con, every time.
Thank you.
But it did sound like part of this plan, there was a training component.
Yes.
For some of the, I don't know, custodial staff to at least understand some of the basic maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you very much. And I forget who I'm turning over. Mr. Hartley.
Teaching and learning.
Good evening. We've got a handful of things for teaching and learning since most of them are mine. I get to go through each one of these. First thing on the agenda is the proposed secondary course changes. This was something that was presented in the December board meeting and has been available for first reading. So that's item ten point one. And moving on for, to item ten point two, ten point three and ten point four. These are the three courses of study, same as the secondary course guide changes. These were also presented for a first reading, available to view for the last month from the December board meeting. Do want to take just a couple minutes and for new board members, existing board members as well, is just take a couple minutes and talk through very high level, the overview of the process for the courses of study. I'm going to try to keep it, again, high level. Ms. Tinsley teaches a whole class on this, so we hopefully won't go that long. But I wanted to just kind of go over again the process. Yeah, I got the signal. The course of study is essentially a document, as you can see on the attachments, that covers what's our philosophy for the courses that we're teaching for the certain subject area. What are the courses we're teaching? How do the standards align to that? And what are the resources that we use? So it's really those four things. Starting with the philosophy, we get a group of teachers together. We get a small group of teachers together, select teacher leaders, strong teachers. We work with our administrators to get that group together and we work together. They're representatives of their entire department. And we, we look at what do they believe in for the philosophy of that subject? And we look at how that aligns with our district goals and policies as well. So they start with that and then from there, we look at the courses, again, that we offer at the high school level and even in the middle school level. There, there tends to be a lot more variability with those. So that takes a little bit of time. But as we look at those courses that we offer, we say, how do we make sure that we're being fair, equal at both high schools, for example? How do we make sure, you know, for example, introduction to film is a class that was at Anderson. That's a class that we're adding at Turpin now to keep things a little bit more equal. So we talk through the courses. We look at making sure that the courses are fitting the needs. And again, aligning with the philosophies. Are there gaps in what we should be offering? Do we need to look at new things? We consult as we go through that as well, consult a handful of other people in addition to having our teachers with great ideas. We reach out to other school districts and we see what they have going on and we get ideas from other people. We work with consultants from Hamilton County ESC who also give us insight. So once we kind of decide what the courses are, then we look at the state standards and we look at how the state standards are going to align to those courses. So that's where the process continues to evolve. We need to match up. What courses do we offer? How do the standards fit there? How do we ensure that we are teaching those? And do we need to relook at the courses that we offer again through that process? As we look at the state standards again, when we, we build those internally, but that's another opportunity for us to look outside and, and get in input, especially the, the fine arts and the visual arts standards are something that we consult with representatives from Ohio Department of Education and workforce. So we make sure again that the standards that the state gives us are aligned to the courses that we offer. And then lastly, we look at the resources. We want to make sure that the resources fit our needs. We use a vetting tool called the Hexagon Tool. As you can imagine, it's got six different things being the Hexagon Tool. So that involves teachers piloting resources, contacting outside vendors, having vendors come in and show us the different, you know, resources that they have. And a lot of times, again, we'll go through piloting processes, especially last year with science. There's a lot of textbook piloting and conversations. So from there, our teachers come together and they, they say, what do we recommend? What do we think works best? And then us as administrators, we say, okay, make your prioritization, make your suggestions, and how does that fit within our budget? So we're very mindful again of how these, all these things fit within our budget. And how do we make sure that whatever we adopt is sustainable and able to meet the needs of all students? It fits our infrastructure for technology and resources as well. So that's the overview. So that's items ten point two, ten point three and ten point four. Before I move on to next, are there any questions about the course of study process?
Yeah, Shane and Kim, I really appreciate you providing that. I think one thing I learned over the campaign process was just a lot of lack of awareness, myself included, on how the curriculum, how the course of study gets developed across the district. So that's really helpful. I guess I, continuing on in the process, so we, we vote on it, let's say it gets approved, then what happens?
Yeah, great question. That was my note that was covered up by my folder. So after that is the implementation process. So we work with teachers and once we say, here's what we're teaching, they work on their curriculum maps. And we say, okay, how do we take the standards and fit them within a pacing guide throughout the course of the year? Teachers work collaboratively on that again, so that there's alignment. From there, once we follow up to make sure that the implementation is correct, that's done through department meetings, professional learning committees, PLCs, where they're getting together, they're consistently on weekly, monthly basis, reviewing the curriculum maps, reviewing the resources and they're, they're looking at, okay, are we, how are we assessing our students? Using our resources, using our maps, what are the assessments telling us about how we're progressing through this curriculum? And then they assess, they adjust as needed as well. So it's an ongoing process where teachers are constantly going back and evaluating how the implementation process goes.
Yeah. And then when the teachers are collaborating, having the department meetings, is that happening just within single schools or across the district to make sure that it's a, all the elementary schools were?
It can be, it can be both. So the high schools right now, it tends to be a little bit more within the department. They have a lot of different variability also. So sometimes they might just be meeting as an entire department to talk about how we implementing, for example, for English, a common lit was a resource that they, they would talk across the, the building. And then when we get to professional development days, that's when they get a chance to have, you know, some of those conversations across the high schools. The elementary, they have once a week, they meet virtually. Every sixth grade math teacher, for example, will hop on a Zoom call and they'll have conversations. So they'll meet pretty regularly to talk through that. I think that's a process that we're working towards at the high school and we're taking some steps there. But that's how frequently and how much they collaborate across the district.
Great. Thank you.
I just wanted to say I really appreciate the thoughtfulness behind using a tool like the Hexagon Tool. I know that comes out of a whole body of research around implementation science. So how do you make good decisions about what you need to implement and how you're going to implement it? And so that is a well-validated tool in terms of being able to make good decisions. So.
And it helps to validate as well to that point of, it's not just teachers saying, well, we like this. Okay, well, let's, let's own it a little bit more. What do you like about it? And how does it compare to some other things? And if you like this, understand that there's always going to be some drawbacks. There's no perfect tool. As we've seen with, through other courses of study, sometimes teachers might say, well, we don't like what we adopted a year or two ago. Well, we went through the process and we'll get through that and we'll work through that, but there is no perfect tool. We'll just have to continue to work through it. Okay. Moving on, item ten point five. It's a quick one, summer school dates and fees for 2024. Again, looking to provide summer school for elementary, middle school and high school. High school tends to again be more credit recovery. And then the last item that I have, item ten point six, is overnight field trip requests. Had mentioned in a previous board update that this January can be a little bit of a, of a heavier time, so you'll see more requests. One of the reasons is international travel. What we're trying to do with international travel is streamline so that we don't just have one or two every one, every few months requests come up. We're trying to streamline that so that's really only twice a year. So January's got three international trip requests, which sound really exciting. And then the other reason that you've got a little bit more is this is the time of the year where competitions come up. So Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, for example, they have competitions in March. Same with our Teacher Academy and our DECA program. DECA is kind of a marketing program that Mr. Service runs. So they have competitions coming up and I believe there's at least one sporting event request for overnight trips as well. Any questions on any of those other items? Okay. So items ten point one through ten point six, requesting for your approval as part of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven point one, Student Services. Mrs. Ryan?
Good evening. Eleven point one is part of teaching and learning, Student Services. This is a resolution for the school district to contract with the Children's Home of Cincinnati, which is now referred to as Best Point Education and Behavioral Health. They're providing day treatment and education for a student, special education placement for one of our students for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And this particular program operates as a partial educational model and a partial date, partial day treatment model. This is, I've included the cost, which is based on a daily rate. And I've also attached the resolution, obviously, as well as the contract with Best Point.
I did have one question.
Sure.
The date on here was January eighth, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four? Should those have both been twenty twenty-four?
I did correct that. You have, I did correct that with them. Yes, I apologize. I, I caught that too. Any questions, other questions? And as noted, it's recommended the board approve the Children's Home of Cincinnati student placement as part of eleven point one and the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve point O, Technology. Mr. Neath?
Good evening, board. Tonight for technology, we only have one item, item twelve point one. This is a lease agreement for student Chromebooks. This is to continue the student Chromebook one-to-one program within the district. Do you have any questions?
What, what age range is this for?
This goes through grades two through twelve. No questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen point O, Treasurer Update?
The treasurer's report starts with Agenda Item thirteen point one. And it is a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The settlement has been reviewed by our attorney and our third-party administrator. The settlement will resolve the claim and precludes further legal action arising from the employee's employment with the district. Moving on to the treasurer's report in thirteen point two. Item A shows the donations, which totaled fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars over the last month. Item B, as always, is the cash activity statement, which presents all revenues and expenditures and all board funds from the beginning of our fiscal year, July one through December thirty-first. December thirty-first marks the end of the second quarter of our fiscal year, so we're half finished with our fiscal year at this point in our reporting. Items C presents the general fund, our five-year forecast fund receipts for the month and the fiscal year to date ended December thirty-first. December is typically a low cash flow month and the cash flow just under one point six million on this report is normal and typical during this month of the year. Agenda Items D and E present the expenditures in the general fund for the month and the fiscal year to date. Expenditures in the general fund are very stable throughout the year. So with fifty percent of our fiscal year complete at the end of December, we have spent forty-seven point three percent of our appropriations with an additional seven percent encumbered. So spending is tracking exactly where we would expect at this point in the fiscal year. Item F presents the activity in our main PI Special Call Center for the month of December and fiscal year to date. The district has not yet received the tax proceeds from the one point five mil PI levy that was passed in May of twenty twenty-three. I believe tax bills are due on February fifth and were supposed to be mailed out on January eleventh. I don't believe I've received mine at my home, so I'm not sure if residents are starting to receive those or not. The December thirty-first bank reconciliations and investments are presented in Agenda Item G. And Item H is replacing the food service cashier at Mercer Elementary. Any questions on the treasurer's report this evening?
I, I have a question. In the general fund, it says there's student fees, estimated revenue ninety thousand dollars. Percentage received is zero.
Which report, sorry, are you on? Just which, A, B, C, D, E? It's up at the top.
That actually is a descriptor that, a descriptor that the system uses. And that really is student fees for summer school. So it's going to be a little bit later in the year when we start to receive those. Student, yeah. And I'm glad you pointed that out. Student fees for regular classes are, say, just your general school fees and class fees are put in Fund zero zero nine. So thank you for pointing that out.
I know I paid some, so it can't be zero.
That's why I was confused. I was like, did that just?
Yeah, this is just our operating fund here. Any other questions on the treasurer's report? If not, I respectfully recommend that the board approve the treasurer's items thirteen point one through thirteen point two H as part of the consent motion, which contains items eight point two through thirteen point two H.
I move to approve items eight point two through thirteen point two as presented.
Second.
Dr. Strickler?
Yes.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
No.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes. Can I ask a procedural question? With a consent agenda, I thought there was an expectation that if we weren't able to vote yes, we needed to pull out whatever the item was that we weren't in agreement on.
That can be done. Yes, that can be done.
All right. Is that something we could work toward before next month, just so we have clarity on?
We can. We've not done that in two years, so I didn't.
I've been really into Robert's rules, so. My fun nighttime reading.
I understand it was if it passed along the line, it didn't really matter.
Okay. And again, that's why I'm asking procedurally, just because I don't know. But it feels like it would be more transparent if it was clear what we were in agreement on and what we weren't.
I mean, I'll, my biggest issue is the, the laptops. I don't think we need them for second grade. I don't think we need them for third grade. I think that kids get plenty of screen time and it's not necessary. And that is a lot of money that we are spending year over year. And I simply just don't think it's necessary in those age ranges. That's just my personal opinion.
Thirteen point three, I think.
Oh, yes. We have quite a lengthy presentation for you tonight. I apologize for the length, but there is a lot of data that goes into this. And that said, could we move on to the first slide, please? So I wanted to take a few moments tonight to share some information that will hopefully clarify how recent home appraisals affect the tax bills received by our residents and also affect the taxes collected by our school district. The purpose of sharing this information is to explain how property taxes are calculated on our millage and direct residents and taxpayers to some helpful resources to help them learn more about their individual property values and tax bills. As I share these resources, it is important to keep in mind that the Hamilton County Auditor and Treasurer have the responsibility for calculating, collecting and distributing property taxes. And they remain our residents' best. and they remain our residents' best resources for questions about individual property values and tax bills. So moving on to the next slide. To understand how the district collects taxes, we need to talk about valuation, tax rates, and the role House Bill 920 plays in what the district receives. The major source of income for most Ohio school districts is a tax on the property located within the school district. Property taxes fund 70% of our general fund budget. Local property taxes are levied in mills. A mill is 1/1,000 of a dollar. There are two different types of mills. There are inside mills and outside or voted mills. Outside, you'll hear the term outside mills, and you'll hear the term voted mills. They refer to the same type of millage. So let's take a look at the district's millage. So if you could follow the link on the slide, please. And this is a document that I shared with the board last meeting. I get this every year from the county auditor. And we talked about the difference between inside and outside millage. The first two rows show our inside millage. Our inside millage is 5.33 mills. It's the first two rows.
Is there any way to make it bigger?
Can you make it a little bit bigger?
Better glasses, yeah.
There we go.
See, there we go.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, and these reports are from the county, so I do apologize. The print is pretty small. And just so you know, after the presentation tonight, we will have this on the district's website, so people can look at it at their leisure no later than tomorrow morning. So by authority granted by the Ohio Constitution, all local governments combined in one area can levy 10 mills of taxation without a vote of the people. These are inside mills, because they are inside the 10-mill limitations set by the Constitution. Sometimes things make sense. Forest Hills receives 5.33 of these 10 inside mills. The other 4.67 inside mills are distributed to township and county agencies. Our inside millage raised is approximately 3.66 million in calendar year 2024. So you can see that makes up a small percentage of our general fund budget. It is less than 4% of our operating budget that come from inside mills. All the millage in excess of 10 have to be approved by the voters. And again, as I said, these can be called voted or outside mills. Voted and outside mills are the major source of income for us, providing over 66% of our general fund budget. The rest of the rows on this document detailed our voted levies, which the county refers to as outside. They use the term outside mills. Some of the questions that residents in our community and people throughout the state ask is why are school districts asking their community for additional voted levies? Or why do school districts return to their community about every four or five years with a levy request? Well, the answer is House Bill 920. And I know that we have reviewed this in board meetings many times, and especially during our levy meetings this spring. House Bill 920 was an Ohio law passed in 1976 during a period of high inflation. This law has forced most local school districts to ask their community for more funds about every three years. As I said before, voted mills are a major source of income for us, as they are for most school districts, and House Bill 920 freezes a school district's income on voted mills. The freeze on school incomes, again, started in 1976, so the income our school district receives from each voted levy since then was frozen from the moment the levy passed. Even when home values increase, a school district's revenue remains the same because of House Bill 920. One major factor that makes the House Bill 920 devastating for schools is inflation. If inflation causes the value of a property to increase, the auditor cuts the school tax mills, so schools do not receive more money. Looking at the chart, you can see a column labeled "full rate." When you look at that, full rate is the voted. This was the rate that was on the ballot. It's called the full rate. The column to the right of the full rate is the reduction factors. This is the factors that the county uses to reduce the voted rate for inflation. The last column is labeled "residential agricultural effective rate" is the rate of taxation that is actually applied to home values. It's the last column, yes.
Look at that big difference.
Yeah, it's a huge difference. So there's been a huge reduction of voted tax because of inflation throughout the years.
Each one of these are uniquely different. If you see these, why are these all different? Because 920 tells you in 2002, this 4.9 mil issue, the reduction factor, so you could never collect more dollars than in 2002. So that reduction factor is different than the one that's used, like, that we passed last May. Each one is going to have its own reduction factor, and it sticks with it throughout life, so that you never collect any more dollars.
Exactly.
So can I clarify, just with a question? So online, I'm seeing people suggest that the district is currently flush with money because we just passed a levy. But the levy is what just allowed us to kind of reboot, based on the inflation we've been working against for the last four years, since our last levy, to basically try to re-equalize. So it's not like all of a sudden we're flush with a whole bunch more money. We're just trying to equalize to be able to get the amount we need to be able to pay staff and maintain buildings and do all of the things.
With about 66% of our revenue coming, and it's frozen at a point in time, so no inflation on revenue, but we're not exempt from inflation in terms of salaries, facilities, food, utilities, things like that. So you're exactly right. Revenues, we are frozen at, but expenditures, unfortunately, we've got to pay the same rates of inflation as other entities. And one of the numbers on the chart that I'd like to call your attention to is, last May, we, of course, had the 6.9 mil levy. It was a combination levy. So 5.4 mills was charged for operating, and that's the fourth row up from the bottom. So again, I realize it's a little hard to see, but the full rate.
See it on mine.
There you go.
I'm looking at the big one.
The full rate was 5.4, but that was never charged. What was actually the effective rate, what is actually being charged to the homeowner, is 4.119017, a drop of over 1.28 mills. The third row up from the bottom shows the PI levy that was passed in May of 2023, which had a full voted rate of 1.5 mills, but an effective charged rate of 1.144171. So as you can see, the rate we put on the ballot is never charged to our homeowner. And this drop is especially high this year, but very seldom is what the rate on the ballot is. Very seldom does the rate on the ballot end up being the rate that is actually charged to the homeowner. The other thing, number, before we leave this chart, I wanted to point out is you see down there on the bottom right, the effective millage that is being charged to our homeowners this year, this collection year 24, is 36.24 mills. If you looked at that same number last year, that number was 38.89. So adding the new 6.9 mil May levy would have brought our millage total to 45.79 mills. Instead, our effective rate is less than it was last year, at 36.4 mills, a drop of over 9.5. So we talked about it a little bit, but for school districts, simply keeping up with the day-to-day costs and increases and inflation is impossible under House Bill 920. Moving on to the next slide, you can see a visual example of the effects of House Bill 920 on voted levies. The district income is stagnant, as represented by the black line, but within the total taxes collected, individual share of taxes paid will change depending up on their home's value relative to the total district value. That's the green line. And rates are reduced, the red line, rates are reduced in correlation with increased values. Put another way, the revenue pie given to the district remains the same size. We get the same money, but the individual slices that each resident pays can change based upon their home's value relative to the total district valuation. So while a school district's revenue from voted levies is frozen, the actual amount of taxes paid by a resident can vary depending up on their home's individual value and how much that home increases or decreases in value when compared to the average total increase in district valuation. Moving on to the next slide. Again, House Bill 920 applies only to voted millage, which is our largest source of funding. But there are two exceptions to House Bill 920. One is inside millage, and as we discussed a few minutes ago, inside millage only produces less than 4% of our operating dollars. Another example is schools are allowed a one-time increase for new construction. But new construction is typically less than one-half of 1% of valuation and typically brings in less than $150,000 per year. So you see, both of those increases are minimal and do not come close to covering inflation. So moving on to the next slide, we're going to move from how rates are calculated to how valuation is determined. The 2023 appraisal. The county auditor conducted property appraisals in 2023. Under state law and Department of Taxation rules, real property in all counties is reappraised every six years, and property values are updated in the third year following reappraisal. So essentially, every three years, property values are reevaluated. The purpose of the reappraisal and updates are to maintain equity among properties. Individual properties can also be updated out of the reappraisal or update process based on other factors such as renovation, sales, and new construction. This slide contains a link to a Hamilton County report that shows the dollar value of the types of properties for the prior and current collection year, along with the percentage increase in all Hamilton County communities. And its print is really small. But again, this can be viewed in line. In all my time as a property owner and in working in public schools, I have never seen a reappraisal with increases this high, not even close. Total property value.
Yeah, and just so you know how high this is, House Bill 920 came in in 1976 during a crazy inflationary time. Houses didn't go up this much. It was just, I don't know, is it the effect of COVID? Is it the effect of not enough houses on the market? And the values just skyrocketed, probably, to some degree. How much, I don't know. But it's just, it's kind of interesting that the whole reason for 920 was this very scenario.
Yeah. So total property value, all values in our district increased by just under 29%. In the previous 12 years, our district only saw an average increase of 1.15%. The lowest increase over the last 12 years was in collection year 12 with a negative 6.16 growth. So values actually went down in collection year 12. The previous highest increase was fairly recent, occurring in collection year 21, and its increase was 13.06. So please know that these increases are not only happening in our district and in our county. I'm sure that you've been reading the news. You know it's happening all over the state. As a matter of fact, Claremont County schools are receiving value increases ranging from 25.57% to 47.86%, with five of the nine schools in Claremont County receiving valuation increases in excess of 38%. For the rest of our presentation, we're going to focus on residential properties. We wanted to show residential properties because that impacts the most people and is the largest portion of our tax base here in Anderson Township. It's, our residential tax base makes up 91.2% of our tax base in collection year 24. If you could go back to the previous slide, you can see we put on the slide there that properties are segregated into residential business and a few different types. So Anderson Township experienced a 30.46% increase, and the Village of Newtown experienced a 26.94% increase in residential properties. However, believe it or not, those numbers, those increases were below the average in Hamilton County. The average increase in residential property Hamilton County-wide was 34.19%. And when you pull it up on your computer and you can read the chart, you can see those increases. Again, many, and you're going to notice on that chart, many municipalities and communities saw increases in the 70% to 80% range. So increases were extremely high. And again, we're sharing this information just to provide some context for the changes that we're experiencing here in our school district and what we're seeing across the county and across the state. This is definitely not unique to Forest Hills. So moving on to the next slide. The next couple of slides are meant to be a simplified example of how changing property values might impact individual tax bills. A homeowner whose property value increased below average will see a different change than one whose property increased well above the average valuation increase. We will show you how to use the Hamilton County Auditor's website to look up specific information for your property later in the presentation. The information that we are presenting here is as a frame of reference as to how different home value increases can impact tax bills. Every home is different. This data is not being presented as something that can be applied to your home verbatim. The tax credits, special assessments levied up on homes can be different. So it's always best, while this is an example that helps us set the reference and helps us set context, it's always best to reach out to the Hamilton County Auditor Treasurer if you have questions about your potential tax credits or questions about your specific bill. On this particular slide, you see homes A, B, and C. Home A had a valuation increase below the average Anderson Township residential increase, again, of 30.46%. Home B had an increase close to that average, and Home C had an increase above the average increase. Moving to the next slide, you can see how the actual home value increases impacted their tax bill. During the last calendar year, as levies were proposed, the Hamilton County Auditor placed expected tax increases due to the levy on their website. Those expected tax increases were calculated based upon the home's valuation at that time in May of 2023. Looking at the chart, you can see Home A's tax bill was expected to increase by $983. Home A received a lower-than-average valuation increase. Therefore, their portion of total valuation valuation decreased, resulting in a lower-than-expected tax bill. Accordingly, Home B's tax bill was just slightly above the expected tax bill as their valuation was also just slightly above the average increase in valuation. Home C's value increase was higher than average, so their tax bill in collection year 24 was more than was originally expected back in May when the levy was proposed. Over the next several slides, we're going to show residents and the board how you can look up this same information for your home. So navigating the, all the information that we're going to be showing tonight is on the Hamilton County Auditor's website, and we're going to show how to use the property search feature, how to look up your, the value history of your home, how to look up the levy information, how to look at payment detail for your home, and how to see how your taxes are distributed. And again, our purpose here is not to dive into specifics, but the images you see will represent an actual home in Anderson Township. We've redacted any personal information to protect the homeowner's identity. Tax information will be different for the residents of Newtown, but again, this part of the presentation is just simply meant to show residents how to navigate the Hamilton County Auditor's website to be able to look up information for your own property. The website contains a wide variety of current and historical data related to property values and tax rates. By utilizing the property search feature, homeowners can look up a variety of information related to their property. So moving on to the next slide, how to locate your property. The first thing you need to go is to the Hamilton County Auditor's website, and the link will be there in the presentation. Moving on to the next slide, well, that, once you get to the Auditor's website, that is the splash page to the left there where you see circled in yellow, highlight, you want to click there for property search. And moving on to the next slide, it will take you to this page, and you can search for the property by owner name, street address, and more. And once you locate, you can, it gives you the option there in order to be able to search the different ways, and it does explain to you how to do it at the bottom of the page. So once you locate your property, the right side of the screen lists several tabs that you can navigate to review information pertaining to your property, and you see it there. Once you've found your property, we've circled in yellow the different tabs you will need to go to to find information. That's currently on the property summary tab, and you can see this tab has appraisal and sale information summary, and it also explains the tax credit and value summaries for your Moving on to the value history, this allows you to look up past and present property reappraisals. So you would click on the right side, value history, and you, this is the page, this is the value history page, and as you can see, it provides information about how the value of the property has changed over time. This is where you can also calculate the percentage increase for your home. This slide illustrates Home A that we looked at a few minutes ago, and it shows you Home A's value increased by 13.75%. So you can look at this for your own home, look at your value that was listed in 2023, and compare that against the previous value, and this is where you would be able to calculate your home's increase in value, and knowing that Anderson Township increased by 30%, you would be able to determine, did my house increase above or below average? The next slides, slides 18 and 19, will take you to the levy information page. Again, you would select the levy information on the right side of the screen, and this provides the data from the Hamilton County Auditor related to the anticipated cost of the new taxes from vote levy. It's important to note that the estimates were calculated based upon 2023 values, so it is likely the actual cost will be different if you've had a significant change in property value. So moving on to your next slide, this shows the, which levies were passed, and you would want to look at each of the levies and calculate, add up all of your increases. So what you would see on this one, you would look at the levy, and if it says new or additional, you want to calculate the amounts across from that to see how much your taxes were projected to increase. In this particular case, the additional taxes amounted to $983.01. Take care to note that some of these levies were renewals, so you were already paying those, so only pick up the additional or new taxes from this tab. So levy information tab, again, to recap, this tab shows you what you were, your tax bill was expected to increase at the time the levy was passed in May of 2023. The next slides, 19, slides 19 and 20, present payment detail. So again, to get here, you would select payment detail from the menu on the right side of the screen. This section is going to allow you to look up detailed information on current and past tax payments. If we could move on to the next slide, you'll notice this page is actually pretty long, so the top is on the right side and then the bottom part of the pages, I'm sorry, the top is on the left side and the bottom part is on the right side. On the left side, you want to look at the total owed section in bold, and for this particular house, the total owed for collection year 2024 is $6,765.87. This is the actual annual payment due in 2024. Utilizing the information on the bottom page, you can add together the first and second half tax payments to get the total payment for calendar year 2023. So the first half payment for this house was $3,346.78. Second half, $3,331.65 to get an annual tax payment in calendar year 2023 of $6,678.43. So to get the amount of your actual increase, take the amount owed minus the 2023 tax payments, and you see that this home had an actual tax increase of $87.44. You can then compare the expected tax increase of $983 to the actual increase of $87. So again, since this house had a lower-than-average increase, its tax increase was lower-than-average, and it made up a smaller piece of the property tax pie in 2024 than it did in 2023. Looking at the last couple of slides, these are the tax distribution pages. Again, you would select tax distribution from the menu on the right side of the screen, and this particular tab provides information on current tax rate, tax calculations, and a graph that illustrates what percentage of property taxes go to different entities. So if we could move on to the next slide, and then it has the actual data and the actual number, the actual amount that goes to the various entities, and if you move on to the next slide, you'll see it also gives you a graphical representation of where your tax dollars went for your own home. So in this particular one, this is an Anderson Township house, so 56.9% of all property taxes go to Forest Hills School District in Anderson Township. On the next slide, we did grab a screenshot of the percentage of property taxes that go to Forest Hills School District for Village of Newtown residents. Their tax rates will be different because they will pay village taxes instead of Anderson Township taxes, and looking at their tax distribution, 58.8% of all property taxes go to Forest Hills. So that, in a very long presentation, and I do, again, apologize for the length, but with that said, are there any questions from the board?
So short story, we're not getting, I'm gonna try. The district does not get any additional money from what we would have gotten because of the increase in home values, but the amount that people owe will vary either less or more depending on where they fell in the evaluation.
Exactly. You get to give this presentation next time. Any other questions?
It's, for everybody that's in here, if you own a property, together, all of you together is our total valuation, and that's how they figure out what we get. But every one of you are singly different in your appraisal based on a variety of things, your neighborhood, amenities, 101 things. Every time they do a six-year reappraisal, the county auditor is required by law to physically come to your property. That doesn't mean he's coming when you're there. They, they hire an outside firm, that's what they do, okay? Then every third year, between the reappraisals, they do a triennial update, which they'll take, they'll watch the markets, and then they also take in home improvements and permits, and they'll add those to it. So it's, it can increase there too, but typically not like reappraisal years.
And the fair funding model that's being argued at the state level, that is to deal with the fact that we are so dependent on school levies and trying to get the state to reevaluate how much they contribute to school district funding?
It is, but unfortunately, the state also looks at what they deem the community's ability to pay, and they continue to send a smaller share of what they calculate a school district needs to wealthier districts. Wealth is defined as income and property tax value, so we are on the guarantee, we're hopeful that if they continue funding that system and they, they keep looking at it, they will pay a fair price for all, in all school districts, for all Ohio children. But right now, it's kind of skewed towards those communities who cannot afford to pay themselves.
And one of the biggest things that the fair school funding model did was actually take a hard stab at what does it cost, true cost to educate a child in the state of Ohio? Because you have to have that before you can figure out how to fund it. They finally agreed and through a lot of horse trading, I think they, they got there, okay? In other words, for every child in Ohio, what does it cost? You know, and they're going to put more money in it. You heard Governor Dewine talk about that. But there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, and one of the big pieces is 920, is how does that, how do you maneuver it? Because as she was saying, depends on the wealth of your district. And the wealth of your district is determined by property values of the whole property, everybody's properties together, and income in a, in a certain percentage, and that's figured by the state. And until we address that piece, you know, the reality is suburban districts that have more wealth, per se, are going to pay a higher percentage of taxes to support their schools versus state funding. The state will give more money to those poorer school districts.
Right. But even before you get to that part, my understanding from those initial discussions was, let's come to agreement on how much it costs to educate a child. I believe they came to 13,000 is the rough historically accurate number of how much it costs, and then the state said, okay, so let's start at nine, as if this should have been a bartering task to begin with, right? We didn't start at an average of 13. Already, there was a reduction in what the state was willing to parcel out per student.
It's called residual funding. It's called, if you ever hear that term, it's, it's, this is how much money we have. Now, you, you know, how many, we have 1.5 million kids, okay? That means you're going to get X number of dollars. Well, if I don't have enough money in that pie, then it's going to get squeezed.
Right. So we start with a lesser number, and then we get less than that average as a wealthier district.
Kind of sort of. That's pretty close.
Yes, yes.
Can you just clarify for everyone the value of the district last year versus this year on the reappraisal and, you know, the difference?
Um, yes.
Total valuation?
Total valuation last year was 1.5 billion, and it went up to 1.9 billion, 1.96. Yeah, I brought the, haven't committed those numbers to memory yet, and I thought I brought that just in case somebody asked, but we certainly can add that to the presentation. It looks like I didn't bring that report. Yeah, it was, oh, here it is. Here it is. Yep. Yeah, that's last year's. Shouldn't have lost my place yet. Here we go. Last year, it was 1.1 billion, 522,671,870. This year, our valuation increased to 1 billion, 963,982,620. So yeah, huge. Like I say, just under a 29% increase.
And then how will all of this be communicated to the parents, the public? I know it's just going to hang out on the website, but, I mean, are we going to communicate it any other way to people?
Josh has set up email home to parents on the website, and reby me, Josh, what else? Different what? Different, different posts to Facebook and our social media accounts.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe just a small snippet. That was a lot.
Well, you.
Could a portion be put in, like the principal's emails that go out every week?
For sure are there.
It doesn't need to be that long.
For a link. Yeah, then we'll put a link onto it, yeah.
Just, you know, for additional information.
Please do so, yes.
I think it's also important to acknowledge that when this levy was put up for a vote initially put on the ballot, that the district made some pretty significant cuts to limit or reduce what we would have to ask from the community, right? Larry, do you remember off the top of your head?
Going, going into this year, we made 750,000 in cuts, and we will continue to look at effective and efficient ways of doing things, and trust me, we want to stretch this levy as long as we can because no one likes new taxes, not, not us at the school district. No one wants to put a tax levy on, and we will continue to work through our organizations as I know the board will look through, work through Ohio school boards to increase state funding, to lessen the, the burden on our taxpayers as well. So none of that stops just because the levy passed. As a matter of fact, the work becomes, you know, even more diligent, even, we, we want to stretch it, we don't want to be out there again. So every contract is, is looked at and quotes are gotten, bid, if, if bid is the requirement, we look at ways to, to trim money, just as you would in your own home, you know, just when you go to buy something or pay for something. You know, just when you go to buy something or pay for something, where can we get this cheapest of a decent quality? And that's, that's how we, we work with our purchasing. And, and, you know, I appreciate the administration and all the folks sitting behind Larry and I. They work very diligently to get the cheapest price they can on books, materials, but they keep in mind the, the quality that's expected and deserved by our community too, as we do our, as we do purchasing in the district.
Just a couple other quick questions or points of clarification. Even if nine-twenty wasn't a thing and we could change how much we collect based on inflation, wouldn't that still lead to taxes that we're paying increasing based on the inflation needs of the district?
It, it would. The difference would be that we wouldn't be asking the community for the inflationary increases. We would be getting them automatically. And, you know, some other states have, and, school funding that you're allowed to increase a certain percentage every year without asking the voters. So I think what the school community is asking for, we just need a reasonable increase in line with inflation. We certainly don't expect, we certainly would not expect to receive a twenty-nine percent increase in our tax bills. But it would be nice for there to be a limited amount. I know that some states are like up to three percent or up to two and a half percent. And then if inflation were more, they still had the ability to go to the community and say, hey, inflation was five. We're capped at three. Can you help us out? And the community would have that choice to make at, at that point in time. But that's how funding is done in some other states. And, and I think that's, we would just like a reasonable increase. So definitely not a twenty-nine percent increase. We're not looking for that sort of an increase.
I think some of the challenge that people feel too is that, you know, we have such a wide range of property values in, in Anderson Township. And just because my property value went up, now I'm paying a higher percent of that, that pie you were describing. That's not liquid money that I have, you know, my, my salary didn't go up by that percentage to help adjust for that. So for, you know, I remember during the, you know, levy campaign, we were talking about like this isn't, you know, a district issue. This is a state issue with the state budget model and all that stuff. So for people that are upset or wanna advocate for changes, like, what do we, what, what recourse do we have? Is it a matter of working with state representatives? Is there any appetite in, in Columbus to revise this? Is it vitriolic in other districts across the state in terms of, I mean, I know Loveland, Milford, all, they all have their levies, but is it, it's just such a divisive thing, passing levies. And we're gonna need another one.
Eventually.
Five, six years, eventually, yeah.
Yes. I think, yes, exactly. If community members are looking for a change in school funding, the appropriate thing to do would be to contact their legislator, contact the governor's office. This is what the state needs to, to work on. We need to have a reasonable increase for our school district that's adequate. We don't need a twenty-nine percent increase. We're not getting a twenty-nine percent increase. We're not getting any increase. But inflation is marching up. I was looking, I was on the Bureau of Labor and Statistics yesterday, on their website yesterday, and I was looking at some CPI data. And last year, the inflation was eight percent for fiscal year twenty-two and this past year was at four percent. So the fact that we get absolutely no increase on sixty-six percent of our budget, we get, we usually don't get a, a big inflationary increase on our state funds either. So we're looking at, state funds typically, I think we got maybe a half percent increase last year. So again, it's more than just that sixty-six percent. It's closer to eighty percent of our budget that we're not getting any sort of increase on. And inflation, like I said, according to, on the Bureau of Labor and Statistics website, showed a CPI increase of eight percent for fiscal year twenty-two and four percent for this past fiscal year, or calendar year. So.
Well, thank you very much, Elena, for that detailed explanation for us.
Wow. Thank, thank you, board, for your attention.
Thank you, Elena. Item fourteen point one is the policy committee report. We have the NARCAN policy. It looks like the policy committee met October the fifth with Neola to discuss. It has been a review and approved by legal. We'd had a first reading last month and it's a second reading for this month. So can I get a motion to approve the NARCAN policy?
I'll make a motion to approve the NARCAN policy.
I'll second.
Any discussions?
I would just say from my little bit of reading and talking to some nurses, everything I've heard is that this is a great preventative measure to have on hand and really can do no harm, even if used in the wrong situation. So it makes sense to me that we would be just putting one more element in place to protect our staff, educators, students, everyone.
Larry, the policy put kind of guidelines in place for things like maintenance and administration and all that stuff, but it didn't necessarily outline our district's policy on what those things would be. Is that something that will still be developed pending approval?
Uh, we do, we, we'll put the guidelines together based off of this policy.
Right.
The short answer is they'll be stored and locked in, in nurses' offices and the training. And you can see some of the, the pieces in it involve training for at least two people within the building.
Right.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So those get developed along, you know, as this gets approved and we put that in.
Right.
You wanna call roll? Please.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Strickler?
Yes.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Item fifteen point one, board discussion. Does anybody wanna take the floor?
I would like to take the floor, just because it's my first official regular meeting and just say thank you to you all. It's been, I think, a good first month trying to get to know each other a little bit and figure out how to work together and figure out our modes of communication with each other in these meetings, with the community. And, and then just take a moment to, to thank the community for those who are trusting me as a representative of the board. I appreciate that and I don't take it lightly. I spent a lot of time reading all of these documents before we sat down here tonight. For those who didn't vote for me, I understand the, the angst that comes with that and I hope over time I will be able to help you see that I am truly here in the best interests of our, our community and most specifically all of our students. And that includes both their academic and their, their social well-being. For the educators and staff in our district, I very much see this as a governance position. We are here to help ensure we're providing the most rigorous and relevant curricular and extracurricular opportunities for students, but also doing that in a fiscally responsible way. And I see that, then in order to be able to do that, we do that by supporting our educators in the important work they're doing every day. And so I hope that you can trust in a board that is here in the best interests of all of our kids and in the best interests of, of public education. So I don't expect this to always be easy, but I expect to always be able to look to direction from what is in the best interests of kids and, and, you know, who do we need to turn to to get the information? We need to understand what that looks like. So I'm excited by our first month and excited to move forward and I'll leave it at that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a few comments as well. I made some comments at our organizational meeting. That, that wasn't streamed, didn't get, you know, not everybody had an opportunity to hear, but also very excited to be here. Also, in trying to avoid being redundant from that, I think I can also address some comments that were brought up by the speakers. One, Mr. and I talked about, you know, the need for better communication and that was something that I had addressed on the fourth at our organizational meeting. You know, we, at that meeting, we talked about the role of the president, the expectations for communication that we have amongst ourselves, expectations for communication with the community and holding each other accountable to that. And I think that that's something that we all are sincere about. And I've been very pleased with the communication from all the board members and the time that, in particular, Bob, Sarah and Katie have given me to, you know, meet them, see them as people, see where, what things we agree on, where we're on the same page about certain things. And that relates to something that Ms. Roush said about her statement valuing all students. You know, that's something in my conversations with all the board members, they've said like, we don't wanna discriminate against anybody. We want all students to feel valued here. And like, we're, we're on the same page with this. So now, you know, I know the resolution was something that was very polarizing in, in the community. I think we have an opportunity in the, in the district here to show that all students are valued through our actions. And, and kind of we'll see that in, it, it play out over the next several months, particularly as legislation in Columbus may or may not be overridden. And then one last thing regarding a speaker comment, Mr. Mijak was mentioning, I don't have the, the five-year plan in front of me, but seventeen million in other sources of operating revenue, Elena. Like, what kind of stuff falls under that?
The reason it's so high is because our TIF revenues fall into that. And, you know, certainly we can communicate the types of data he was asking for. However, the five-year forecast has to be in the format that's prescribed by the state of Ohio and it does need to be only the general fund. So we are limited by the rules from the workforce development. Used to be ODE, the DO department, the, the, ODE has changed its name. So we are limited by those regulations and we certainly can supply the data, but it will need to be outside the five-year forecast process because even the line items are prescribed. And as to what it must be, and it is very strict what needs to be added. Certainly, we always work on making the notes. There are twenty-one pages of notes to it. We can always improve up on those and always look for ways to improve up on those. And continue to look. I know that we've added a report in our board reports that's going to detail and we plan to make sure we communicate more details surrounding the new tax, the new PI tax levy. So certainly communications is something you can always revise and look at and improve and do that. However, the five-year forecast is pretty much a set document and the only changes we can really make are note disclosure.
Yeah. Two more quick things. One, Katie, I appreciate you specifying specifically what it was about the consent agenda that you didn't agree with. I can only speak from my experience, and my son is in fifth grade, that, that the laptops are less about screen time and more about technology literacy, information literacy. They're not something that's brought home. They stay at the schools. You know, obviously, a lot of course planning, coursework they do, math lessons, for example, are done through the computer in an engaging way for the students. And I'm assuming that the one, one-to-one policy that Steve was talking about, you know, went through that same rigorous curriculum development process to determine like what's the best policy, what sort of technology the students need, all that type of stuff. I didn't know if you had any other thoughts on?
I just don't think it's necessary before fourth, fourth grade is probably when I would see K through three. I don't think, I really just don't think it's, it's necessary. Kids know how to use technology. They don't need it in the classroom. They already had iPads. They don't need a Chromebook. Like, it's not like there wasn't options already there. There were. Why are we, why do we have iPads and Chromebooks? Why do we have all of this technology when, if you wanna talk about some of the mental health issues that are going on in this country, get your kids away from screens. Have them learning with each other, have them interacting with each other. They do not need to be in a screen. Like, they don't need one in their face. They, they can do math on paper, they can do math with a friend. They do not need a screen at young. They, they just don't. And I have, I don't, there's just so many studies that talk about how bad screen time is for you and, and it hinders their social development. It hinder, I mean, I, I could go on and on and on. So like, I'm very passionate about this. I'm passionate about it with my, my own kids. You don't even get a phone until you're in high school, like fourteen. So like, obviously, like, I'm not parenting everybody else's kids. I know other people allow their kids to have screen time and do stuff at other points, but I just do not see any need for it that young. Like, I'm, my four-year-old can pick up a phone and find like Subway Surfers in seconds and I'm constantly having to like pull it away. Like, it takes absolutely zero effort for, for young kids to, to figure this out. It's not like the nineties when we literally had to learn how to type and learn how to use a computer because those weren't around. In today's day, like, kids pick up on it so quickly, like, I just, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. They're not, I don't think there's a ton of planning like you're talking about in fifth grade and, in second grade. Like, it's, it's just different. And so, and I, I think sometimes there's a lot of busy work that goes on at that point in time and I think that there are other ways that kids could be using their time, other things that they could be doing instead of, again, sitting in front of a screen, which is hindering social development and, I don't know. I could, I could go on and on about this.
I hear you.
But I'm, I'm very passionate about it because it, it is why you see so many issues later on in life with,
Yep.
And I, I just don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, I, I was hooked on Subway Surfers for a little while.
I don't know why, like, it's like collecting coins and stuff.
I think a lot of what you're saying is valid and I definitely appreciate you sharing. I think, you know, I run into the same problems with my kid with, with YouTube and Mr. Beast and all that stuff. And I, I see a difference between that type of screen time, just like the sitting there on the couch for an hour, like, whoa, let's take a break, versus a math lesson, typing, how to find and search and distinguish valid versus invalid information online. You know, they're not watching Mr. Beast or playing Subway Surfers at school, right?
I hope not, but I, I would guarantee.
The other thing I think we, we have to keep in mind is the first standardized test they're required to take, that until very recently, they had to demonstrate proficiency on to be able to leave third grade in ELA. Now, that's changed a little bit, but they take it in fall of third grade. And it's on the computer and it's on this computer with a mouse. And so regardless of iPad skills, there has to be some kind of preparation in advance or all of a sudden we're testing their ability to be able to understand how to read and navigate on a computer and disadvantaging them compared to kids who've had that opportunity to, to be prepared. And I'm certainly not suggesting it's all about the test, but I think when we think about the age and grade at which it starts, the familiarity with your testing environment is an important part of being able to demonstrate your knowledge and focus on the content piece. So I don't disagree with, with much of what you're saying about the content, but that does have to be part of our conversation if we wanna continue to have the report cards we have and, you know, demonstrate the, the performance.
And Steve. You need two years of. And Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're transitioning away from the iPads to the Chromebooks, correct? Yes, okay. So they, they wouldn't have two?
I know, I just don't, I don't, I don't think either one's necessary, so. But that's me. They, they know how to use these devices. They're not learning for the first time at school. Like, this is, it, it's in everyone's home. Like, regardless of even where you are economically speaking, like, everyone has these types of devices in their home.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you sharing a little bit more. And just the last thing I wanted to note, I know we have so many cool, awesome events going on in the district, but I wanted to point out one in particular coming up. Turpin Theater here, February ninth and tenth, has Pride and Prejudice, a production of Pride and Prejudice. There are always awesome shows, so just wanted to get that on everybody's calendar to go check it out.
And you reminded me, I had a couple shout-outs I forgot as well. If I can just say, I promise I'll be quick. So I caught online that there was a, an Anderson production last year, The Whisper House, created by Devon Lands in twenty-three, that is actually up for a national award through the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. So when we talk about our rigorous and exciting curricular and extracurricular, I think that's amazing. And then from a curricular perspective, you've talked about the spelling B last time and bringing that back. And AR has a student who's currently in application for the regional level of that after the spelling B here. So, I mean, there's so many good things happening. I think it's nice to shout them out at the end here. Thanks.
Well, in another event is the Parent Academy next Wednesday. Thank you so much to the foundation for supporting that and actually doing babysitting and dinner. That's pretty nice of you guys, appreciate that. And Elena, the last one, I think a speaker had asked about the permanent appropriations, the difference between the ninety-eight and the difference between the 98 and the 115 million budget. So is that report in every treasures report, or is it only the permanent appropriations?
It, there's no law that says what your reports have to look like. So I do include, yeah, both numbers, and it is like the general fund, most, most treasures do pull that out because that's the general operating fund, and all the other funds are more or less special purpose funds that use for a particular reason, and it is the most material of all the funds. So the 96 million that's on the five-year forecast is a large part of that. And so we do want to make sure that we have all of our funds, and one of the things we can look at is we do put it at the fund level. I know you and I talked about some different ways funds, and I did review the reports you suggested. That particular school had what we call our board activity statement, they had the same statement, but they actually had it by, funded by special call centers. So it was more expanded than what we had. Other than that, most of the board reports have the same information, just in different formats, and that's something we, like I said to you, that's one of the things, one of my goals since I've been here had, had been to get to those board reports. So that's something that definitely we can take a look at and continue to refine as people ask questions and tell us what they're looking for.
Okay. Because, I mean, a lot of people aren't savvy with board docs, and they might not even be able to find that. So, yeah, I mean, people just aren't aware of those appropriation accounts. So maybe, like you said, we can communicate that to people a little bit better. I'd appreciate that, too.
Okay. Absolutely.
Will we ever go back to a business advisory council, or having one?
I think that's something that we've been discussing. We did not have any applications when we put it on the website. I know that that's something Larry and I have been discussing as to exactly what the format of that should be, given that the district has a business advisory council, and we belong to the one through Hamilton County ESC.
How did you communicate that? Because I didn't even know that you put out information for applications for that.
It was on the website.
We just have to do a better job communicating on multiple platforms, because, I mean, I didn't even know.
I didn't either.
So.
I didn't either.
Yeah. Anybody else? Questions?
No.
Okay. 16.1, the next scheduled meeting of the Board of Education is February the 21st at 6:30 at this building. 16.2, motion to adjourn, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Dr. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.